Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Anubis Committee of a Whole Meeting. It's just like the votes. Town of Anubis is within the Gwichon Settlement area, adjacent to the Inuit Settlement area. Home to the Gwichon, the Inuit, the Mephi, other indigenous people from throughout Canada. Other people from throughout Canada and the rest of the world. All of this makes Anubis a great place to live. With that, we will call for item number two, the adoption on Wednesday, which will be the adoption of the agenda. Any additional? You'll see, we've scratched eight two, the donation form didn't come in, so that will likely now be in the later meeting in November. It's for our Christmas event that Inglewood held it last year, but once, once that's in, then we'll put it on the agenda, the last meeting in November. Any other additions, additions to the agenda? Seeing none, declaration of conflict of interest or in our interest with any of the agenda items? None declared? Delegations, presentations, and petitions. So is the RCMP report gonna be? Who else? Chris was watching the hockey, so maybe he's gonna come Wednesday?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. We'll get a report from Sergeant Chris Wyatt on Wednesday. On the question period, I think we're good there. Adoption of the minutes, any clarification? Six one, any clarification, correction on the minutes of the October twentieth, twenty second meeting? Anything that anyone saw? Okay. Action items. Cindy, you wanna go through those? You want to add something?
Uh, yes, just, uh, we're still waiting word from NTBC in terms of what the rates are gonna be for twenty twenty six, so we're just waiting for clarification on that. Again, the land acquisition, we won't be able to take a look at until we actually pass our community plan and land use discussions, uh, as well, leading into that, of course, is on Wednesday, we're gonna be doing the public hearing. And, uh, the only other addition to the action items, I just wanted to follow up as action item number four was the dog park. Uh, in discussion with the committee today, there there's been lots of questions, when is it gonna happen? When are we gonna have that? So again, to be abundantly clear, that is on hold until we get uh, it's suspended until we get a needs assessment done, a location assessment to determine if, uh, you know, where the best location would be for that. Obviously, public consultation follows, a review of the liability, in particular, in, in consideration of the fact that we don't have veterinary services here. So if there was an incident in the dog park, it's obviously use it to our risk. But we need to take a look at the town's liability in terms of that space. So until we actually announce to the public and do a public consultation, in terms of a needs assessment, there is going to be no movement on that.
So, I guess stay tuned about the dog park.
Yes.
New business, item eight one will be a request for council decision for the NWT Association of Communities, AGM. This is the twenties, well, twenty fifth to the twenty eighth of February. So last year, Councillor Gillis and I went down, and so this year, if there's interest from any of the council counselors, uh, there is the opportunity to go to Yellowknife and participate in that AGM, so, um, think about it, and then, uh, we can, we don't have to make a decision right away, it's not till February, but, uh, we do wanna start thinking about it. The sooner we book the the flights, which is the most expensive part of it all, um, the cheaper they usually are, so.
Is the accommodation?
Security. And the accommodations is the other issue.
So we're going with yourself and one counselor or versus yourself and two counselors? We would need to make arrangements.
Yeah, we'll make depend on, I mean, really, it depends on the interest and if people can get time off work or want to attend, that's really what it depends.
I have a schedule conflict, so I'm not available.
You're rich.
Sorry, I have a scheduling conflict, but I have times.
Oh, okay, yeah. I mean, it's interesting to see all the communities together, dealing with the issues that they're dealing with and making the motions, and there's lots of interaction with funders and other groups that provide services to the, all the municipalities that make all common, there's, uh, what they call active tables, so you go around spend ten minutes at each table and go to the next table. And last year, we, and Cindy and I were there, and, uh, Councillor Gillis, we identified some potential funding streams, and so we were able to follow up on that, so it's, it's definitely interesting, but it does take with travel pretty much next to the entire week.
Yeah.
Okay. Eight two, represso, that one, we're bumping that one until we get the, uh, form in our hands. Uh, eight three, request for council decision, conditional use permit for the dental clinic. Cindy, do you wanna just give an overview of that?
Uh, again, this is pretty straightforward. The intention where the dental clinic is going to be is over on Bonapum. And, uh, that isn't zoned for personal services or professional services, so this is simply a conditional use. If it's within our zoning bylaw, um, we just needed conditional use, meaning your one motion to approve that. So I don't anticipate any um, any concerns about that. I think everybody would welcome regardless of where it is, a dental clinic here.
Yeah.
So, and it is literally five hundred meters from the previous dental clinic, so.
Any questions, comments on that?
No, that is a good idea.
Request for try building. Eight four, request for council decision, this is a request for a donation from the Royal Research Institute for Space, and this is for the GWT Centre for Geomatics, uh, they put on a one day for all the high school and for the community, and, uh, like I said, done this in the, in the past. Questions, comments? Councillor Barrett?
I know they're not here this evening to answer the question, but it would be good to know why it's not being, uh, hosted at Aurora College, because in the past, I believe it was at Aurora College and not at the complex.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we can, we can ask that question tomorrow, or not tomorrow. Wednesday morning, you can get that answer. Yeah. Any further questions, comments on eight four?
Is it the college for?
Moving to.
And then when the foyer isn't available, then they do it at school. Just strange to see the complex.
Item number nine, bylaws, and this is where we have our nine one, uh, community plan bylaw, and then we'll have nine two, the zoning bylaw. So let's just deal with nine one now, and there were a few changes, just to make things consistent and also identify in, in a few of the areas which we had zone, for example, in country residential on Shell Lake, but there were also some commercial lots in there, and that makes a difference on how they're taxed and also how they're zoned for whatever the use was, and, uh, Peter's also here to answer any questions, if, um, if you notice the changes that were made on the, uh, on the community plan bylaw. Councillor Barrett?
Sorry, I may have missed it, but did we get the latest version of the community plan sent to us?
No.
Oh, okay, we didn't send that out.
We're trying to make some changes to it.
Before sending it out.
Before sending it out.
Okay.
We just wanted to identify some of the changes with the zoning bylaw.
Right.
Which is up there.
Okay.
And, and that ties into, into that, so.
Would it be better if we shared the summary?
Like the difference between the two?
Well, I think, I think at this stage, can council make a decision on Wednesday, definitely share the summary and and both document. There were very there were very few changes from the last version, um, a little bit of, uh, cleaning up, there was some wording that we had changed, that, uh, was you. Uh, Peter, maybe you can give a bit of an overview on the last changes, just so that the counselors understand some of the changes that were made, seeing we didn't get that out to them, and, um, if you want there.
Um, sure, should I focus on text or map to start, or just take it from the top?
I think most of the changes were primarily the zoning. Was it a big part of those changes?
Well, the community plan would change slightly because of the zoning, but, uh, that, oh, that's you, Jen.
Yeah, the I, I would call this phase polishing, um, I mean, I'm happy to go into the details if people want me to, um. In the planning world, this is, you know, like, the previous time we came to council, I'd said, it's not ready for second reading, um. And this time, I'm saying it is ready for second reading. It's gone through enough polishing that, uh, that I, I, I think with the, with the recommended changes, it's ready to go to the minister, um. That's a quick sum, it's a very, very high level summary, but, uh, it depends if council wants me to, how much detail council wants me to go into.
So I think some of the changes, just with regard to if we took, again, incorporating it into the community plan, which is the discussion as well as the bylaw is um, distinguishing, uh, existing businesses and, uh, the intent in the future. So you'll see that the downtown core has been expanded here to incorporate both residential as well as, uh, commercial. So that just, uh, accommodates some of the requests that we've been getting within the downtown core that allows for discretionary use rather than a zoning bylaw change. The other, and Peter, if you wanna scroll the map up just a little bit more, if you can.
I needed to bring up where the Nova.
Sorry, where the Nova, like the highway commercial? There we go. So the other thing that we identified, which is a discussion for tonight as well, is when we talked about highway commercial, it was these areas here, which are basically unserviced lots. Um, and then we started going down the rabbit hole in terms of what is unserviced or not, so the debate was whether or not we wanted to have it zoned as highly commercial or unserviced commercial. But then that just opened up a Pandora's box about what about Stanton's and, and all of that type of thing. So one of the things that we had done, because we had identified um, the Arctic, Western Arctic Center, the Nova Hotel, this area here, even though it's not on the highway, is actually commercial properties that are unserviced. So one of the questions we're going to ask, or we were asking you tonight is in terms of what that title is. So right now, we have it as unserviced commercial, um, which means that we would have to change some of the wording within, within both the community plan and the bylaw. Or do you believe that it is sufficient to call it highly commercial with the description meaning adjacent to? And that's where Peter is talking about, if you look at Shell Lake, was, uh, another area where there's unserviced commercial in terms of taxation. So all of these are unserviced commercial as well. They're identified as commercial occupancies, not residential lots.
But can houses be put on those commercial lots?
It would be a discretionary use.
Okay, under discretionary.
Yeah. So, I mean, the big title is, do you wanna call it highway commercial, uh, with the description that it also includes this, or would you prefer it to say unserviced commercial?
I know, I think as long as if somebody wants to build on those lots, if they sell or do whatever, somebody wants to build on it, as long as they got the ability to put a home there or whatever, that's fine. I mean, if, and, because they can still put a business there if they want to, right?
Yes.
So, but if, as long as they can put a house there, if that's their preference, preference, then that's.
So it would be a discretionary use, or a mixed, mixed occupancy, where you might still have a lot of flow planes there, but you also have.
Yeah, cuz I own one of them, and I might put a house there, so.
Right.
That'd be up to our discretion, I guess, but.
Actually, I think we changed that. Changed that to country residential, the lot in question?
No, the, the, the one next to it too, though.
This one?
Yeah.
Um, so that was one of the changes, was that discussion there uh, about the highway commercial versus the unserved commercial.
Mm-hmm.
So, yes.
I have a, a strong planning background, so what would be the advantage of one versus the other from a planning perspective and from a definition perspective?
Really, there's no, there's no difference. With highway commercial, we would just have to add all of those others versus with unserved commercial. Um, we would just capture all of that. Either way, it's just a title. Okay. And it's the title that we get, whether or not you want highway commercial or unserved.
Yeah.
There's no financial up or down or anything, just.
No, it's still a commercial problem.
But there, there likely will be a bit of a financial difference in that similar to country residential, doesn't have the services residential in town has, so if we're following the same logic, highway commercial.
It should be cheaper.
Would be cheaper than commercial downtown. Yeah, so we will need to review those before early twenty twenty six to set the rates, or if we know what the budget is, but.
Because there's, if you go highway commercial and the road is done by the infrastructure, then you go Shell Lake, it's gonna be different, cuz we do the taxes, we do the cleaning, we do the garbage there. It's gotta be something different.
Yeah, there's differences.
Right?
But the big difference is water and sewer.
Yeah.
That's the big difference.
And the garbage, it's a long ways out.
Well, we still pick up garbage, you know, along airport road, and then we pick up garbage at Shell Lake, so that's, that's still there. But the water and sewer is the big difference.
So tax wise, would it make a difference then with that other lot that I've got then?
Yeah, the, the commercial rate is considerably higher, like the third highest.
Well, then let's, let's change that. There's gonna be a house on there, there ain't gonna be a business run on there, so let's get that one. Country residential.
Yeah. Separate the myths. These decisions, you'll have to make that request for a change.
Well, definitely remind me not to forget.
Remember that part about the declaring a conflict?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I know, it was just part of the discussion.
Yeah, so the majority of the changes are actually within the zoning bylaw, because we have rezoned, um, the uh, changes to the community plan itself are minimal, and it's more worth something uh, in terms of the intent. So we will get that out to you with a, a comparison of what we've changed since the first reading, uh, we'll get that out to you tomorrow after, now that we've had this discussion.
Okay, any other questions, comments on the community plan? And just to remind everyone again, once we, well, on Wednesday, there'll be a hearing on the community plan and the zoning bylaw before the council meeting, and then we'll go into the council meeting. Then if everything's good, we will pass second reading. It goes to the minister probably for approximately a month. And then hopefully come back to us for our December meeting, because we only have one meeting in December. And we can then give a third reading and then say we've completed it within twenty twenty five. Well, that's the stages. Okay? Nine two, um, same as community plan, except for the zoning bylaw. And Cindy just indicated the changes were more on the zoning side of things.
Uh, the one change that we did make, I'm not sure, Peter, if you can pull that up again, uh, was, um, so, you don't even need to, we, we can explain it, um, some of the existing occupancies, we needed to identify, for instance, Hinterland was, uh, identified, uh, in the quarry area, was identified as Hinterland, now that is industrial, because it is, there is industrial uh, activities there. And then up towards the satellite station, there is a known, uh, landfill site out there, where we, we know that things are buried there, so we need to identify that, uh, within the zoning bylaw. Um, and within the zones, uh, more for, uh, historical and prosperity purposes, not necessarily for planning, uh, it's, it's more identifying what is actually present there right now.
Okay.
So a lot of the occupancies that are in existence right now, we needed to reflect that.
Okay, we'll get copies with any summary of changes to everybody, uh.
One morning.
Yeah. Any other questions on the zoning bylaw? Good. Nine three, bylaw amending, this is our third reading bylaw amendments to the solid waste collection. And, uh, this was, uh, just basically clarifying local and out of town, um, the, the description, because there is a fee difference. Any further questions on that one?
Nope.
Okay. We don't have the department operate dates tonight, information items. So I was in Yellowknife, uh, went down Tuesday for meetings, Wednesday and Thursday on the Arctic Security Working Group multipurpose or dual purpose infrastructure meeting. Um, you can tell that DND is ramping up on their spending in the Arctic. There were two hundred and fifty people registered, there's about a hundred in person, and then about another hundred and fifty online at, you know, various times. A lot of federal departments, um, a lot of, um, other groups, organizations, uh, because they can smell money, and they can see that with Carney's government and the nine million dollars that was put into the budget to be spent before the end of March, they know something's gonna happen. Uh, the presentation I gave touched on five different areas in Anubis that could be multi, um, multi-use. Uh, one was a gas line going from uh, out by the, you know, the edge of town, the industrial area, um, all the way out to the airport, so ten kilometers of a gas line, which would service then Shell Lake, service the satellite stations, service everything at the airport, including the new DND. Um.
Yeah.
The construction.
Yeah.
And so that one made sense to a lot of people, because if you've got a seven thousand square meter hangar, um, you're not gonna heat that with electricity. So they, they know they need to have an energy source out there. Uh, another one was a dual, um, redundant um, bulk water station up the, up where the water tanks are. And possibly has, you know, a redundant water tower, because our one water tower is probably over fifty years old, um, they could see that that would make sense. Especially the, the bulk fueling, I don't, I don't know if they're sure about the water tower yet, but, uh, I don't think they're sure about anything yet, but at least the people who were in the position to make those decisions were there and were listening. Um, the other big one for us, and we, we had money in, in the budget in twenty twenty five, but we didn't do anything was down in our lot, um, down next to the liquor store there, where we were looking at a new um, heat and grab, cold storage, office space for the utilidor crew, probably a meeting room. And then the shared use, uh, could be with the Canadian Rangers, Coast Guard Auxiliary, and Ground Search and Rescue. And they were very keen on that. In and after my presentation, the, um, fellow in charge for, basically for DND came up and said, um, when can we build that? And so I call Cindy, we're putting money into the, uh, budget this year to, um, clean up that site, do some, um, geotech work, and then also probably some concept design work. And so that we're ready to move forward in twenty twenty seven. But we do need to do the geotech work to see what's under that whole area, there has been a lot of, um, nothing, something for sure. Um, Councillor Raymond?
So why that specific location, what's the problem?
Sorry, what's that?
Why that location, we know it's a problem.
We do, we know something's going on there.
Yeah, we do, it's everywhere, and behind, it's all sliding, it's all
Yeah.
Going towards the river.
Yeah.
How about our King Road yard?
So that's, yeah, I thi- I think we need to do the, the assessment or make, come to the decision that that may not be the best location, and that if, if that's not the best location, it's a small location.
Very small there.
That actually is pretty small, that yard.
Um.
I mean, if you're to view like, uh, the shops there, but your, your outside footprint is very small.
Yeah.
And it's in the slide area, I think it's gonna slide, but.
Yeah.
I think that whole area is gonna slide, but I guess your drilling will tell you.
Yeah, and the, the first stage is gonna be to go to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, so that that's, I think, what we wanna identify for staff, that some of the issues of it being on that site, so.
We've been developing King Road with all our extra dirt and our extra stuff and developing the yard there, it's a pretty nice sized yard.
Yeah.
Nice place to, if we're gonna off shit on something to set up shop.
Yeah.
Nice area.
Yeah.
Is that one across from Bill's place?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's.
And then on top of that, if we're to have, you don't have to worry about all our stuff out there, all our assets, you have, you know, our gravel, you know.
Yeah, the more trap, I mean, it's just up there.
Yeah, you know, it's just, it was a strategic plan for a while, like, feeling it slowly.
Yeah.
It's working, but it's real slow.
Yeah. No good points on, on that site and the potential erosion and there's definitely some nice lenses, like with the amount, we've seen that whole lot drop compared to the actual warehouse and stuff, so we, yeah.
Is proximity to the river like a concern? Do they wanna be closer to the river?
No, I, I think they're interested in being anywhere. I mean, initially, we initially, some of them thought they would like to keep everything at the airport, and then they realized the security implications, and plus very difficult for the Rangers to be going all the way out to the airport on Skidoo, you know, and and so I think they realized, oh, some of the stuff, it'll be better to have it separated.
Mm-hmm.
You know, could be, because once they start building and also you know, later on, when, when the, um, the C thirty fuel tanker is, is located here, the security on that end of the strip is, is gonna be twenty-four seven.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Nothing we can do well in selling our river yard, improving our King Road yard.
Yeah, that's another option, yeah.
I mean, I, being that it's a slump way and it's erosion, sliding. I mean, but it's fixable, I'm sure.
Yeah, you clean it up and see what we wanna do with it. Yeah. Okay, um, so that what was I on number three, potential use, um, some of the other thing we had discussed before here.
Um, a, uh, dry hydrant.
Oh, yeah.
At Airport Lake.
Yeah, um, one of the issues we've gotten fighting fires at Airport Lake is the water is ten kilometers away. So, and it made total sense to DND to set up a dry hydrant that would be permanent on Airport Lake, where we would just connect into it, and then you're, you're only five hundred or, you know, a little more than half a kilometer away, uh, from the airport, and they post to ten kilometers, so that, that was another, um, and that's and we could do the same thing at Shell Lake, um, just a matter of setting it up so that then, depending on the season, uh, what you have to do to actually you know, pull water up.
And that would also mean some expansion in terms of the, um, the access to Airport Lake. So perhaps making, well, because the fire trucks obviously have to turn around, and that's a, that's not a sufficient space now, so it might be some groundwork around there to expand the, um, boat launch area on.
The elevation was huge there, though there's a lake that's at the south end of their runway, that's more accessible with less elevation.
On the south end?
On the south end.
Yeah.
And they have their only three hundred meters from it.
Yeah.
And there's barely, it's just that there's a lake at the end of the runway, if you look on.
Yeah, is it accessible, like for trucks?
We have a ditch right to it from the runway.
Hmm.
But then we have a road that is it would be, take nothing to build the road up to it, to put a, a lift station there.
Yeah, that would actually be closer.
It would be way closer.
And easier to maintain, too.
Although it's, it's, I mean, if you go by the pump that you're gonna have to put to lift from Airport Lake to the runway.
Have to drive the truck down, yeah.
Be a tanker shuttle.
Yeah, but I mean, even even to drive the truck down, the elevation and coming back and forth, that's. Three hundred meters compared to three kilometers or even more.
Well, that would make would definitely make more sense.
Just it's a drainage.
Yeah.
And it's a it's a dead lake too, so it's it's a spring lake and all the. I guess if it's for emergencies, you probably get your permits to be easier, but Airport Lake is a fish apparently.
Right, right, right.
And you're only allowed so much water to draw a hundred cubes a day.
Yeah.
But I mean, being that it's for D and D in an emergency situation, I imagine the permits are relaxed.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, anyway, um, a good reception from them about, um. Shared infrastructure, so we'll see, we'll see how that moves forward, uh, we're definitely follow up sooner than later. Um, I think they've got money that they wanna spend right now, but we're not quite shovel ready, but we can be.
Did they, sorry, did they talk about paving at all?
Uh, no, there was no discussion about paving.
You like an update?
What's that?
Would you like an update, I suppose?
Well.
It's it's a couple of years away. Um, I I didn't know if Danny got older yet.
Yeah, 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 so, yeah.
It's a, yeah, a couple of years old, at least.
Yeah. Yeah, because we didn't have anything firm, we didn't raise that with D and D, but hopefully. Um, we can. We don't have to wait until twenty eight thirty.
No, I don't, I think it'll be earlier than that, it's just it's just a matter of more settlement. And being that we have six thermosters, it could be. Maybe some more investigation.
Yeah. But if it for for the town purposes, if it could be twenty seven, that would allow us. Next year to get everything ready and then pave in twenty seven, but. We get everything ready and then we're waiting till twenty nine or thirty, then there's a lot of gravel roads, so hopefully.
Not only gravel roads, we got a lot of failures going on, a lot of sink areas and.
Yeah.
And we got a lot of failures going on, there's ones coming we don't even see yet.
Yeah, so. We got a year or two to prep for it, but it would be good to get the paving sooner sooner or later. Um. Second item was the, so anyway, we're gonna follow up on on some of those multi-use facility. Uh, discussions and and projects and then hopefully start moving forward. Second item was, I'm sure most people saw it. Media coverage on our, and then council approved at the previous meeting, our MOU with the city yellow like. Just to keep each other informed on what's happening with the Northern Operational Support Hubs. And those are. Growing importance probably daily with the D and D and NORAD. Um, and the amount of activity that they expect that will be out of Anubik. So we'll stay tuned, they, when we met with D and D, they said they were coming back in December. Uh, or December, January to start early discussions about procurement, um. And and just how that will take place with D and B over the next ten to fifteen years, so they wanna start those discussions now. And I think both Council Gillis and myself have now, uh, been asked to. Be a witness on the D and D Senate, um, procurement, um, committee. So just to get some northern input because they didn't have anybody from the north. Um, on this as as witnesses and so, um, Senator Anderson's office, uh. Called and said, there is absolutely nobody from the north that are witnesses to this committee. And the Senate committees are quite important in in that they will make major recommendations, which which then the departments. Um, you know, goes through, uh. Their their departments will then follow those recommendations, so. Uh, we don't know what the hearing dates will be, but uh, we will be pulling together some of the businesses to say, look. We're going down to Ottawa to be witnesses, um, at this Senate committee. And what do we need to be able to tell them? So stay tuned for that, once we hear what the parameters are, I think there's some other. People in the north that have also been asked to come down with it. I'm not sure who else, but I know for sure Council Gillis and I were identified.
Well, that's good, that's a good opportunity for sure.
Well, and it's it's a good opportunity to identify that, you know, you. You need to be including northern businesses in those, you know. In in those contracts, you can't just issue a large contract out of Ottawa worth billions of dollars and then, you know, nothing trickles north. So anyway, I think it's an opportunity to, you know, make our voice heard and say that, look. We need local businesses to benefit from. If there's gonna be billions of dollars worth of contracts in the future, we need the businesses in the community to benefit from. And the tax, they're they're the ones who are hiring people, so it just makes sense.
Yeah, we don't wanna be the subs, we wanna be the general.
Yeah, and just, yeah.
And run our own destiny in our own communities, right? Cuz in the past, all all huge federal jobs, infrastructure, everything. Big contractors come in and hire us, but.
Yeah.
Same time, it'd be nice if we do our own.
Yeah. No, I think I think we need to. Let them know what, what. What we would like and and what would benefit the north the most, so anyway, it's a great opportunity to do that, so we'll pull together a. A focus group before we go down, just so that, you know, we're representing people, yeah. Okay, that's all of the information items, I had any other information items from anyone else? Nope. I have number twelve, council concerns, any council concerns? On anything? Other than we're getting lots of snow and, um. Not a good freeze up when we get this amount of snow, so.
That's great.
Very many skidoo's sinking, but it's certainly. You can see where the skidoo's have gone across Blue Lake and the whole trail is filled with water.
Water.
You know, we're not getting a good freeze up, so.
Yeah.
Foster Raymond?
Maybe a little conflict here, but we need help on snow on the side, um, as in the bylaws, so. The the traffic's unreal.
Oh, and you're trying to.
People are, people are, uh. They're just insane.
Yeah.
How they drive. I mean, I've never seen so many near misses in one week. And I have Airport Road, the bypass.
I saw.
Town, the school bus, for example, the school bus. They're not, they're not paying attention, people aren't paying attention, the school bus stopping, there's signs of, I mean, there's, we have to clamp down on a few things here. Before we have some major accidents, it's it's coming and it's really slippery out, there's like more snow to come, it looks like we're gonna have. A record year again, we don't want it, but it looks like it's coming.
Yeah.
I mean, there's early signs, well, it started two years ago the same way.
Yeah.
And the warm weather and the forecast just says more and more and more, right?
Yeah, it's supposed to start cooling off tomorrow night. But hopefully it gets down to minus twenty and.
Stays there.
Stays there for a while, so we're gonna freeze up.
We might wanna do. Public information, something, you know, like flashing lights don't mean you speed up.
Yeah.
I've uh, I've got an email started.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz it's getting very, very controlled.
Reaching out to be.
And I'm one of the guys myself, I don't believe my guys until I've seen it myself and it just.
Yeah.
Like even a little blurb on Facebook or something, you see equipment on the road, take a different route. Instead of bottlenecking with, you know, you got boaters and graders in there.
With inspectors.
You know, just avoid it, yeah.
Yeah.
That's. There's more than one way to get to the north.
And if not, we'll close the road until the road's cleared and they're gonna have to go around anyway.
You know what?
Don't wanna have to be the adult in the.
It's a good idea to you.
Hundred percent, yeah, people can't smart up for sure.
I wish we've got some good bylaw bylaw officers that can get out there and yet. We can, you know, directing traffic, directing people, just educating people, so.
Night plowing is an option.
I don't know.
What's that?
Saying night plowing.
Then we get to complaints keeping up all day, and we will.
Yeah, well, with the backup beeper there, that's a pretty loud.
That's right. We try, we try to be as discreet as we can and do things, let try to stay away from weekends and late at night and.
Um, do you normally have a plan? I I mean, aside aside from, uh, like a plan for the date.
And no, not really, in all fairness, what we try to do is if we do this side, if we do the. South side of town, last time we'll do the north side next time, back and forth or enough. And then on top of that, we got one-way streets, we got the main street. We try to do streets during different hours, like one-way streets, we can do with the. As for example, Twitchin, you can do that anytime cuz it's a one-way street and we can do it. Uh, Wolverines is a one-way street, we try to do those main outer streets and inner streets. And then do all the congested ones after then.
Yeah.
And we try to avoid work hours, school, school roads during school hours, uh, main street during work hours, uh, you know.
So the reason why I'm asking is if there's a plan, as part of that communication to people is, hey, just so you know. The east side is getting done today. Be cognizant of, you know, so just a little bit more public education in terms of. Um, you know, you might wanna avoid this area if you're an impatient driver for the next three hours or something like that, right, so, um. That is an option that we can use, you know, we also have on our website now, Inubik five one one. So it's almost like the Yukon five one one where if there's any road closures or anything like that. We could potentially, you know. Have that as a communication tool as well. So put some thought into that in terms of if you have a plan, just send it off to Lori or Daniel and. You know, we can get it that out there, that, you know, main street's being done today, so. Be courteous and be cautious and that type of thing.
Cindy, just on information items, do we know? When council will need to convene on a weekend or on a Saturday to discuss a budget?
We would be looking at the weekend of. The sixth of December, Saturday the sixth.
Fair.
Uh, that's generally when we would, we would do that, so.
Fair. So if council's gonna put that into their schedule, if that. And if it doesn't work for you, let Jen know. But that will be, that'll be the first opportunity. After the committees and the staff have looked at budgets in various departments. To come together and then probably have the better part of a full day just going through that. And discussion, um, and presentations, you know, from the various departments.
So we should hope to have that budget vetted by the finance committee, um, the week of the twenty fourth of November. Uh, with any revisions or any suggestions, uh, probably to you by the twenty ninth, that gives you a whole week to.
I'm assuming those budgets coming from departments. Such as infrastructure parks and or infrastructure and public works and, um. Leisure services, other budgets also, their budgets also going to at the committee level?
The individual, yes, yeah, so the committee is gonna be looking at the. Budget in its entirety.
Right.
And what feeds into the budget of thatness.
Yeah.
As well as capital.
Yeah. Okay, and again, we will attempt to. Get all of that done by our, our, um. The only meeting we're having in December, the first meeting on the, the twelfth of December. And then, um, then we've got our our operating budget for the new year. Okay, um, any other council concerns, questions? Oh, last information item, sorry, uh, don't forget, remember, stay service tomorrow at the, um, school. Believe it starts at ten thirty.
Yes, yeah. Last.
Always, always a great turnout. M L A Rogers is emceeing the event. And. There's usually lots of people there, certainly all the military people will be in uniform, the RCM here in uniform, our fire department's in uniform, so. It's a great event and it's and it's certainly worthwhile coming together, uh, as we do once a year to remember those who. Worked hard and ensured we've got the life we've got today, so. It's a great thing to go, to do, I will be there laying the wreath for the town of Anubik and, uh, yeah. It's, uh, it's it's a great event. And we don't have any in camera items, and so that's everything we've got for tonight and looking forward to seeing everyone Wednesday. Great, thanks.
Thank you. Bye bye, night.